Vice Chair Ciadella.
Hi.
Okay, so we've got a vote of five and one absent and one abstained. Next item is announcements. Do any of the planning commissioners have any announcements?
Chair, I wanted to.
Okay, Commissioner Albana.
I wanted to remind the commissioners to file that Form 700, which is due.
Thank you. Good reminder. Commissioner Melson. Vice Chair Ciadella.
Yeah, I just want to remind everybody that the Chamber of Commerce is going to have a crab feed on April 14. You can get your tickets through the website. Milpitas. Yeah, in Milpitas. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Planning Director's not here, but we have our principal planner Jay Lee. Any announcements?
No announcements.
Right, thank you. Next item, public forum. Those interested are invited to address planning commission on any subject not on tonight's agenda or via Zoom webinar. Instructions in the agenda. Speakers may provide their name and city of residence for recording secretary's record and comments may be limited to three minutes or less. As an item not listed on the agenda, no response is required from city staff or the planning commission and no action can be taken. Planning commission instruct the staff to place the item on a future meeting agenda. Ms. Medina, do we have anyone wishing to make a public comment?
Yes, Chair, we have one request to speak from Mr. Rob Means.
Okay. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Means. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Rob Means. I represent the company Loopworks that is creating the advanced transit system down in the metro area of Milpitas that will be connecting the BART station with all those neighborhoods around that area. You've got a card that we handed out earlier. It gives you kind of a pictorial of the fact that we are dealing with small tabs. Essentially, the size of a passenger cabin of Toyota Corolla, for example. But small and more importantly lightweight because we're going to be elevating that on a guideway that's up in the air 16 feet so that it's not interfering with any of the people, kids, dogs, cyclists, everything else that's down here at ground level. If you go to our website and it's on the back of that card, you'll find answers to nearly every question you can imagine about this project and the technology. If you have difficulties finding your way to the answer you're looking for, there's a search function and you can always contact me if you'd like a guide to the jungle that is that website. So it's a lot of information there and getting to the piece that you might be looking for may be challenging. But I just wanted to give you a heads up. We're just looking at the demonstration project right now, but more and more people are starting to talk about, okay, what about extensions? And obviously, the most likely extension that I can see right now would be coming further north on Milpitas Boulevard to this area in City Hall, then cutting across the railroad tracks to the library and the health clinic that people can easily get to and from, and then, of course, down Main Street and have one or two stations there to support the Main Street development. And that's about all I've got. If you've got any questions, please get ahold of me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Means.
Mr. Means, before you sit down, it's my understanding that you've recently registered as a lobbyist under the city's lobbyist ordinance.
Yes.
Did you, before you proceed or before you end your public comments, wish to identify yourself as a lobbyist pursuant to Title I, Section, Chapter 310, Section 3.5.120?
You know, I took a look at the code and it said, I thought that it said that I needed to identify myself and the company I was working for. I don't recall seeing in there that it said that I had to identify myself as a lobbyist, whether paid or unpaid.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, City Attorney. Ms. Medina, do we have any other comments either in from the chamber or online, Zoom?
No others. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Medina. Next item, public hearing. Item number one, capital improvement program, general plan conformity. Principal Planner, Jay Lee.
Good evening, Commissioners. Our capital improvement program manager, Michael Silveira, is here to give the presentation.
All right, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Silveira.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we hear you just fine.
Excellent. Give me a quick second here. Something just went wrong with my screen. Sorry about this. Give me a few more seconds here, sorry. All right. We get started here. So, thank you, Chair, for the introduction there. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michael Silveira, the CIP manager. The purpose of tonight's presentation is for the planning commission to review the proposed 2024-2028 Capital Improvement Program and to make the findings that the program is in conformance with the adopted general plan. Next slide, please. Tonight's agenda. I will start off with an overview of the proposed capital improvement program. Take a look at how the program is in conformance with the adopted general plan and then conclude with recommendations. Next slide, please. Let me provide an overview of the proposed 24-28 Capital Improvement Program. Next slide, please. First off, let me start with the calendar of the program. On February 28, the proposed five-year CIP budget was presented to the City Council at the CIP study session. On March 6, the park section of the proposed CIP was presented to the Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources Commission. Tonight, I will be presenting the proposed CIP to this commission for conformance with the city general plan. Then staff will return to City Council on April 18 for consideration and adoption of the five-year CIP. Thereafter, the operating budget will be brought forward to the City Council on June 6 for adoption. Next slide, please. The Capital Improvement Program, better known as the CIP, is a comprehensive five-year budget planning tool for infrastructure needs that is updated annually. The document includes priority city capital projects for new infrastructure and repairs and replacement of existing infrastructure backlog. It outlines the improvements, associated expenditures, anticipated project schedules and funding sources. The document is organized into six categories: community, parks, streets, sewer, and storm drain improvements. Only the funding requests in the first year of the proposed CIP are funded, which it will be effective July 1. Projects in subsequent four years may be partially funded based on projected available funding or not funded at all. Next slide, please. Here are the City Council's seven budget priorities. The CIP is in conformance with these priorities. Next slide, please. The project prioritization process. New projects and scope and funding changes to existing projects requested by departments are reviewed, prioritized, and ranked by the engineering and finance departments for conformance with the council priorities, available funding, and resources. The ranked project list is then discussed with the city's manager's office for recommendations to City Council. Criteria for ranking the funding requests are listed here on this slide. I'll give you a few seconds to review this list. Next slide, please. The proposed five-year CIP budget consists of 148 projects for an estimated budget amount of nearly $244 million. There's a value of $57 million of insufficient or no funding available for projects in the four out-years of the budget. The chart shown here is a breakdown of estimated costs with associated number of projects for each category. Next slide, please. As mentioned previously, only the first year of the CIP is funded and the project funding becomes available July 1 of each year. The proposed budget for fiscal year 2324 will fund 47 projects for an estimated amount of $30.6 million. Approximately 75% of the funding will be dedicated to projects in the community, streets, and sewer categories. Next slide, please. The next six slides are the list of the 47 projects that are being proposed to be funded this coming fiscal year. Each table shows the project, the recommended funding amount, and the proposed funding source or sources. The next few slides are 18 projects in the community category and being proposed to be funded. Here on this slide is a list of existing projects. Majority of these projects are for the upkeep of the city's existing infrastructure. I'd like to highlight a few projects as you review this list. The funding for building roofing repairs is for the roof replacement at the community center and library, which has exceeded their service life. The funding for Fire Station 1 Module Building for the replacement of the building and it also has exceeded its service life. The Public Art Program is an annual contribution from the Public Art Fund for continuous implementation of the mural program. The proposed funding for the public safety mobile computer terminals is to replace all units and fire vehicles. Next slide, please. Here's a list of six proposed new community projects. I would like to mention a few projects as you review this list. The audio/video system in the council chambers is scheduled to be replaced during City Council Summer Recess in '24. The watershed analysis will support and maintain the city's FEMA community rating, which determines flood insurance premiums. Current, the city's rating is Class 7, which residents purchase flood insurance at a 15% discount. The Gateway Signage Project is for the installation of new signage at key entry points into the city. Next slide, please. Here are six projects in the park category being proposed to be funded in the amount of $1.6 million. Four of these projects is for the upkeep of the city's existing park infrastructure. Pause here for a few seconds for your review. Next slide, please. Here are 10 projects in the street category being proposed to be funded in the amount of $7.9 million, which are typically dedicated for the upkeep of existing street infrastructure. One project that I would like to highlight is the bicycle improvement project. The city received an allocation of a one-time state funding grant of $1 million to improve the bicycle network along high-traffic bike lanes and signalize intersections. Pause here for a few seconds for your review. The projects. Next slide, please. Here are six water projects being proposed to be funded in the amount of $3.5 million by water funds. I'll pause here for a few seconds. Next slide, please. Here are five sewer projects being proposed to be funded by sewer funds in the amount of $8 million and two storm drain projects being proposed to be funded by storm drain funds in the amount of $1.9 million. I'll give you a few seconds for review. Next slide, please. During the city's Council Budget Study Session on January 31, staff reported that does not foresee a reduction in the current service levels based on newer revenue information, labor contracts, and various funding expenditure strategies. A balanced budget is projected for fiscal year 2324 and thereafter until Measure F is sunset. Staff has also discussed the possibilities of aligning the reserve policies to start addressing the aging and long-term city's infrastructure needs, which is primarily supported by the general fund. Recommendation to the city's reserve policy would be brought forward as part of the proposed operating budget process. Next slide, please. Now we'll review how the projects in the CIP conforms to various policy goals and actions of the city's general plan. Please refer to your gender report for specific details. Next slide, please. The city's general plan identifies the community's vision for future and provides the framework that will guide decisions on city growth, development, and conservation of open space and resources in a manner that is consistent with the quality of life desired by the city's residents and businesses. Staff reviews and analyzes the projects in the capital improvement program to ensure the program is in conformance with and will further the goals, policies, and implementation strategies outlined in the general plan 2040. In accordance with California Government Code Section 65401, it requires the planning commission to review and report to City Council as to the conformity of the proposed CIP program with the adopted general plan. Next slide, please. For the next several slides, I will show several policy goals and actions that are related to CIP projects. I will start with the community improvement category. Staff has found Milpitas Gateway Main Street Specific Plan Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance Update and Metro Impact Fee Study with several land use, community design, economic development, policy goals, and actions as shown on this slide. Next slide, please. These projects listed on this slides are related to the safety element of the general plan. Fire Station 1 Improvements, Fire Station 1 Module Building Replacement, Public Safety Disaster Plan, Public Safety Mobile Computer Terminal are projects that meet various emergency preparedness policy goals and actions. Next slide, please. The Public Art Program and Gateway Signage are projects that comply with community design element goals of public spaces, public art, gateways, landmarks, and wayfinding. The Climate Action Plan Update, Community and Senior Center Emergency Resilience, Water Analysis are examples of projects that meet various climate policy goals and actions. Next slide, please. Under the Parks category, ARPA Park Rehabilitation Project, Football Bleachers Replacement at the Sports Center and the Parks and Sports Fields and Sports Courts Rehabilitation Programs are projects for the upkeep of the city's park infrastructure. Metro Tango Subdistrict Park, McCandless Park, and Cardozo Park Softball Field Improvements are projects to provide public space for activity and social interaction and to serve the needs of the community. All these projects meet the goals and objectives of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan and complies with the Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Element of the general plan as listed on this slide. Next slide, please. In the street improvement category, majority of the projects comply with the policy goals and actions of the circulation element. Vehicle Bridge at South Milpitas Bridge Boulevard, Bicycle Improvement Project, Pedestrian Overcrossing Bridge at Montague Expressway are projects that will enhance safety, improve network connectivity, and facilitate bicycling and walking between communities. Traffic Studies and Improvements and Citywide Traffic Safety Assessment and Modeling are projects that monitor traffic service levels and implement improvements such as traffic calming. Next slide, please. To ensure the city's transportation infrastructure is maintained for pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicles, the CIP includes several projects to meet city's goals and actions. The ADA Curb Ramp Transition Program, the Annual Street Resurfacing Project, Street Repairs, Street Pavement Restripeling Program are examples of these projects. Next slide, please. The projects on this next few slides are in the water, sewer, and storm drain category, which complies with goals and actions of the utility service element of the general plan. Under the water category, the recycled water distribution is a project that reimburses developers to expand the recycled water system in the metro-specific plan area. The Water Conservation Program is to ensure that the city is consistent with the current best management practices and the city's policy. Meter Replacement and Testing Program and Water Leak Detection Program are examples of projects to monitor potential water loss in the city's water system. Next slide, please. Examples of projects to provide adequate public infrastructure for existing and future needs is the well upgrade project and the second water reservoir and pump station for the metro area. The well project is to maintain existing groundwater wells as a resource for emergency and supplement water supply for the city. To ensure the safe drinking standards are met, the CIP includes several projects such as the minor water projects, hydrant replacement program, reservoir cleaning, and cross-connection control program is to meet the city's policies. Last August, City Council adopted the Water Master Plan Update. The update identified several CIP projects to provide a reliable and sustainable water supply for the present and future needs. The projects are listed at the bottom of the slide and are anticipated to start in 2025. Next slide, please. Under the sewer category. Under the Sewer category, San Jose Regional Wastewater Facility is the annual payment for the city's shared cost of the improvements at the plant. Sewer Pump Station Rehab Program and Minor Sewer Projects are maintenance projects to increase the lifespan of the system and ensure public safety. Last August, City Council also adopted the Sewer Master Plan Update. The update identified several CIP projects for inspection and pipe improvements, including Forest Main A Project to provide reliable and sustainable sewer supply for the present and future needs. Next slide, please. In the Storm Drain category, here's a list of four projects for maintenance and improvement of the city's storm drain facilities. Pause here for a few seconds for your review. Next slide, please. In conclusion, the Capital Improvement Program outlines a five-year program for a variety of public infrastructure projects, and it includes associated scheduling, financing, and related details. As shown by the analysis, incorporated into the agenda report and the presentation, the city's proposed twenty-four, twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program is in conformance with the city's general plan. Next slide, please. Tonight, our recommendation to the Planning Commission is to open and enclose the public hearing and adopt Resolution Number twenty-three dash zero, zero, seven, funding the proposed twenty-four, twenty-eight Capital Improvement Program is in conformance with the City of Nopetus General Plan. This concludes the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silvera. Do any of the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Silvera? Or or Principal Planner? Okay, all right, there's no questions. This being a public hearing item, I'm going to open up the public forum. Ms. Medina, do we have anyone wanting to make a public comment either in the chamber or online?
Yes, Chair, we have Ms. Barbara Navarro in the Zoom queue.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Navarro, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. This presentation was really good, but it went by really quick, and I had a question about the library and the maintenance of it because it's been very disheartening to go to the library and see that the roof is leaking, and there's puddles in the children's area during the rainstorm. So I was wondering, what is it that you're really trying to do in the library? Are, is someone going to fix the roof? And I don't even know if that's Nopetus's to fix or not. That's all I have.
All right, thank you for your question, Barbara.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Navarro. I'll go ahead and allow the question to be answered. Go ahead, Mr. Silvera.
Sorry about that. Thank you for that question. Yes, as part of the roof building project, the maintenance project, Public Works have identified that work, and it will be funded this coming fiscal year, and the roof will be repaired or replaced sometime in the, within the next year or so.
Any other public comments?
No other commenters.
There's no other public comments? Can I, oh, can I get a motion to close the public forum?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Mosin. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Owasty. Roll call vote. Commissioner Mosin.
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Owasty.
Aye.
Commissioner Galon.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Vice Chair Ciudella.
Aye.
Chair Chuanizai. The public forum is now closed. All right, any other questions or comments to Mr. Silvera or Placeta? Okay, Commissioner Mosin.
Yeah, I have a question. In one of your slides, you showed us that the parks was like public art project and on-call park service. What is on-call park service?
So Public Works uses that project to to enables them to respond to immediate emergency needs. So if there's some kind of emergency, like some kind of irrigation break or a pathway that has been destroyed by some kind of storm, they'll use this project to, you know, to be able to access funds to repair and maintain the parks in a quick and orderly fashion.
The reason I'm asking is that I live, I walk through that walking path that connects all the parks, peril to Hillview, and I see a lot of graffiti there, and I see a lot of dog waste that has not been cleaned up. And during that long path, there are only two places where there are doggy bags. And sometimes they run out. So what do people do? Is that something that the park, on-call park services are going to attend to?
Actually, actually, no, I believe, and unfortunately, I don't have anybody from Public Works. The Public Works has, I think it's called, an application that's called Nopetus Works that you can, it's on, it's on the city website where you can access it, and it'll go into their system for immediate kind of graffiti identification or troubling issues like this, like with trash or anything like that. And Public Works would be able to respond back to you as soon as possible.
Can we suggest that a new, more polls be added saying put your dogs on leash or put trash bags around the tracks in the new plan for improving the parks rehabilitation?
This is not the format for, to request a project. I'm just here to, to present the CIP to be sure that it's in conformance with the general plan. But you also can make that recommendation to staff or probably to the city manager's office so that Public Works could be aware of these concerns that you have.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions? Any other questions or deliberations or motions? Anyone wish to make a motion?
We cannot, we are not able to impact the CIP, but we have to approve of it. That is my comment.
Okay. Any other comments?
Chair, I had the question.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Albana.
Yes, when they said they had this budget for improving like streets, what about, does that include the street lights?
There is a project that is specifically for replacing streetlights or improvements to the streetlight system that Public Works uses for their, for that program.
And what about this, everybody's talking about like sustainability, the materials you use and the improvements looking forward to the next ten, twenty years. Will materials be considered, will sustainable materials be considered like in improving our lives?
For example, what Public Works has done or a project that they recently completed, they've switched out all the lights, kind of the old-school lighting with LED lights for energy savings. And that's one of the projects I mentioned, which was, actually, I did not mention. It's in the, in the CIP, but it's going to be closed this year because they completed that. Any newer projects that we do, we're always considering newer type of material for sustainability. We always incorporate that into our project. For an example, we just finished the Fire Station One, sorry, Station Two, and many of those materials were that we could use were recyclable or sustainable for the long, long term or incorporated into that design. So it's really a project, project by project basis.
Thank you, Mr. Silvera.
No problem.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Galon?
Yeah, I have questions regarding about the solar panel. Is that part of the CIP? I haven't, I didn't see anything about solar panel.
So the, the solar panel project, I think you're referring to the solar panel project that was installed recently in, in the parking lot of City Hall. That was a, a project in the CIP. They're, they're, I believe, wrapping that project up and closing out. I believe Public Works, as part of the Climate Action Plan, is also looking into other areas or other facilities in the system, in the city, and see if solar panels can be incorporated.
Commissioner Albana mentioned about the street lighting or especially in Calaveras and, you know, the, the island, Calaveras from Nopetus Polybar to the view drive in the center of the island. Are you gonna do something on that, put something like, or anything, make Nopetus look?
All right, so you're talking about the streetlights on Calaveras Boulevard?
No, no.
I'm sorry.
In the island?
In the island. Oh, you're talking about implementing streetlights in the island in Calaveras Boulevard?
Yes.
There's no plan for that. Calaveras Boulevard is owned and maintained by Caltrans. So currently, we don't have control over Calaveras Boulevard. So there's no plan for that right now to install any streetlights on Calaveras Boulevard because we don't have ownership of that right away.
How about the electric charging station? We should add to add more electric charging station in the city?
So in the past, Public Works has implemented some electrical charging stations as part of kind of the Climate Action Update goals and policies. As you can see here in City Hall in the, in the back parking lot here, that there are new charging stations. There's a random charging station, I believe, a few at the library station that we have installed. Public Works will be better better prepped to answer that, for that. I do know they're looking at other locations for future installations, but I don't know where. I'm sorry, I can't answer that question for you exactly where.
Especially right now, we have only two stations, right?
No, we have quite a few, maybe for the public in front of City Hall, yes. Those are for public consumption. In the rear, in the, in the back of City Hall, there are for city electrical cars, so they're dedicated there. I do know the city installed two at the library state, a library structure about four or five years ago, so I do know of those two. I'm not aware of any other ones that have been installed.
So that is, that's, that's for the public, that anyone can charge their?
That is correct.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Galon. Any other questions? Commissioner Albana?
Oh, yes, Chair, I wanted to add also to Mr. Silvera. Not only the streetlights, are we done with maybe the improvement of like making it uniform, the street names, you know, the lighted street names? Are we practically done with that improvement, or we can still improve it?
I do know Public Works has been working on that. That was a three-to-four-year program. Exactly where they're at with their program, I think they're in about year two to three. How much is left over? I, I'm not sure about that. But I know there, that some of the funding requests from last year and this year is dedicated for that ongoing program.
Great to know. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Welcome.
All right, Commissioner Owasty.
Thank you, Chair. This is for Mr. Silvera. Under Community ALPR and Security Camera Program Project Number three, four, five, nine, how, how many cameras are there in the project? And how much they are going to benefit the community and the security cameras? We do see some security cameras on the poles, but here and there. But if there is some incident happening, the police cannot retrieve those footages. So is this something which is going to be a police project and the police are going to work on it? And how it will directly impact any crime taking place in the city? I, if you have any information?
I do. I can only speak partial to your, to your question there. What I do know, and it's identified in the, in the CIP, is that this is, the project you mentioned is a police-managed project. So they've received grants and, and done feasibility studies to locate higher areas of crime, I guess, to keep, put it in short. They, since twenty twenty, they have installed roughly about thirty-five cameras and strategic locations so that they can monitor these trouble, troublesome spots. Exactly how they, and they use that to their, to, for investigation or just to control the, the crime that happens in those areas. So they do have a plan, plan. They've been monitoring this plan. To what extent, I don't have any more details more than that, that what they provided me. I do know that they have extended the lease agreement for these cameras for an additional few more years and are planning to install roughly another ten cameras in, in certain locations.
Would you be knowing how many ALPR cameras we have right now besides the security cameras, or they go hand in?
They go hand in hand. So roughly, what, what my understanding through this project, they have installed already thirty-five cameras in, in citywide.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Owasty. Any other questions, comments from any commissioners? Just one, one question more for staff. So, you know, can you put up the one slide you had on the, you know, general plan conformance? I think it's like, one of the slides that talked about that.
Slide eighteen.
So I just wanted maybe perspective of Principal Planner Lee, you know, just in terms of, you know, what the planning department has done to, you know, ensure general plan conformity here. And, you know, it said staff reviewed and analyzed the project and maybe just give a very brief comment on general plan conformance.
Yes, I could speak to that. So we did review the CIP and a lot of the projects that we are directly managing. Those are things that we've carefully prioritized, given our general plan policies and council priorities. So especially with the planning department projects, those are things that we vetted and pursued, whether through grants or other means to get funding to implement the general plan. We are also, we also are going to take an annual progress report on the general plan, which is due to HCD, State Housing Department. And we have to report on our progress on how we are implementing. And uh, we have to report on our progress on how we are implementing the general plan. And a lot of the projects that CIP manager Silvera went over are actually in that annual progress report. Um, so we, uh, you know, a copy will be available once, uh, once the council authorizes us to submit that report to um HCD. Uh, so a lot of these programs in the CIP are more long range and policy planning projects, but we also implement the general plan through uh reviewing development projects. So we, you know, every development project that comes in, um, that we approve or, or also recommend for approval at the planning commission, even the city council. Uh, we, we always, you know, uh, check the general plan and make sure that it's consistent with the policies and work with our applicants, work with developers to um tweak the project if necessary um to, in some instances, instances, better implement um and conform with the policies.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, Vice Chair Seirdell?
Yeah, I just got a comment and, and probably a question for you too. I have a very close friend who happens to be my wife and lives with me. And she is always complaining about uh not seeing the stripes in the middle of the road. Perfect example is uh Park Victoria between Calaveras and Jaclyn. I haven't seen a city crew out there striping streets for probably two or three years. And I'm wondering if that's just not a priority for the city or, but I, you know, I just think it's very dangerous, especially when it's rainy. You can't see the line in the middle of the road.
So um, there is a project dedicated for um en- enhancing or improving faded striping. I can uh put in a call into Public Works for them to be aware of this area. And that was, I'm sorry, Park Victoria? And Jaclyn, you said, correct?
Yeah, Park Victoria between Calaveras and Jaclyn.
Perfect.
You, you can't see the middle of the road. And, and like I said, how come we haven't seen anybody out there striping streets in the last two years?
Oh.
Covid thing or what?
So there's, there's two parts uh that we do on the engineering side. We do our annual street resurfacing project uh where we, we look at streets that are kind of, don't meet a certain standard that we have uh and pick neighborhoods to uh resurface streets. At the same time, we restrip the entire area. Uh, Public Works does more of the maintenance of uh the, the striping. They probably have a priority list um and, and they, they probably um schedule their program accordingly, uh, exactly how they schedule it. I'm not quite sure. But I do know that there is a um, a CIP dedicated to striping or restriping areas that have faded.
And why isn't that, why is it in the CIP instead of an ongoing maintenance issue?
Um, this is used as the maintenance system. This is really, the CIP can sometimes be used for maintenance project. Uh, it, it's not part of their operating budget, but they use it as very similar to an operating budget where they can just pull uh funds from the CIP to, to schedule or do maintenance of striping.
And then, you know, like I said, I haven't seen anybody out there striping streets for two, three years. What's going on? I'm sure the city's got a crew that does that. Are they just not doing it or they have other priorities or what?
I just.
You know, my, let me tell you, my friend uh tells me that every day when we're going down a road.
All right, can I jump in here? Um, so
Thank you.
Uh, one of the things, uh, Mr. Silvera, I think what I'm hearing here, uh, you know, so a lot of questions around uh Public Works and, and uh, so at least what I'm hearing from your end that, uh, you know, if a resident has any questions or, or, you know, there's an app, you know, on the, in the pub, you know, Public Works Department to, uh, you know, put these in. Um, so it's not necessarily part of the capital improvement, but I mean, I guess the question that I want to know from what I'm hearing from, you know, uh, my fellow commissioners here around Public Works is that there's their essentially, you know, I mean, part of what we're looking at is general plan conformance, right? And that's sort of, it's sort of uh where the, the, the overall city you know, land use and all that, that's, that's, you know, kind of part of it here as well. But it sounds like um there is some budget uh in the capital improvement plan for some of these type of projects. But if there is specifics, then a resident can go ahead and, and put a request in through the app or even call the Public Works Department and then they prioritize that. Is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, you put that uh beautifully. So yes. Uh, and I think the app is called My Milpitas App. I'm looking that up right now. Um, yes, the CIP uh tonight is more for, to, to ensure that the CIP is in conformance of the general plan. There's, you know, what we specify in the G I, CIP is for uh new infrastructure and also maintenance projects. If uh anybody has a complaint, you can always submit what they call here a service request uh right there on their page for any um, any things that you, you seen probably troubles you or, and, and it can go into their, their queue and, and probably have them schedule some kind of uh maintenance service.
All right, thank you. Um, I just hope you know, my cut in, uh, Vice Chair, just did you have any further questions for this? Okay.
No, not at the moment.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments from any of the commissioners?
I have a question, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Gualle. Um, however, I just want to just um, want to make sure, you know, so one of the things I, you know, uh, as, as the planning commission, uh, just want to remind the commissioners here that the questions we're, we're supposed to be looking at here is primarily around general plan conformance. And that's, that's the primary thing we're looking at. I mean, I realize that there's a lot of questions that come up on the, you know, the CIP and, you know, there, there's certain things that we're looking at that and it's, it's kind of overall, you know, the budget there. So I just want to make sure that any questions we have, you know, are more related uh around that and conformity. So if you have something, yeah.
Yeah, regarding about the public safety, um, if you look at um IHOP and in Calaveras, um, making a left turn, uh, you're going to Calaveras to um Hillview Drive. Um, I saw a lot of cars beating the red lights. And that corner, this is IHOP, um, if you see, especially on Saturday, Sunday, it's a lot of kids standing on that corner. And my, my concern is, you know, but what if, if somebody would maybe out of control when they're driving the car, beating the red lights and, and will run over the IHOP that corner, Calaveras and, and, and Hillview. I don't know if, as part of the CIP, they can put some um, uh, uh fence or maybe just protect this, it's walking in that corner or that IHOP, what should, IHOP should put something in there for? Yes, okay.
So Mr. Silvera, at least what I'm hearing, like, you know, everything that, that we have in terms of CIP is all kind of all set in, 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 in place already, right? It's just general plan conformity is what we're looking at.
That is correct.
Question from Commissioner Gualle, is that something that, uh, I mean, you know, certainly as a resident, you know, we take those inputs that we, we would, um, would that be something that would have to go through Public Works or, or like even public safety? Would have to be looking at that?
Um, I probably would bring it up to uh, bring it up to the planning director that can probably felicitate that inquiry um and, and direct it to the appropriate uh department to respond back to.
I am sure if I got all your questions, is that what you're?
Yeah, yeah. What do you buy? Um, I didn't, I didn't understand what he's saying. Can you repeat, Mr. Michael?
Uh, 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 I'm, maybe I didn't understand your question, uh, Commissioner there. Um, were you asking a question about uh the traffic safety there at Hillview at the IHOP?
Yes, in that corner, could we put, add some barrier or something in that corner?
So I, I, I think we gotta go, go back to um what the purpose of tonight is for is to, to find the CIP. Uh, to see, to find the CIP is in conformance with the um with the general plan. Um, now, there is there is a, a public meetings, um, public hearing that, that you can provide some input at the CIP prior to bringing it to the commission. Uh, um, so I guess there, there's a um, a platform there uh making requests to be included in the CIP now.
Yeah, Mr. Silvera, I see that Principal Planner Lee seems to go, uh, I, I'm going to divert, uh, Principal Planner Lee.
Yeah, it seems like a lot of the comments are um regarding uh specific items that could be addressed in the CIP. I think the good news is that the CIP is updated every year. Um, so, uh, but I, I do think CIP manager Silvera, um, he maybe could confirm, but there still is some opportunity to provide comment. But if, you know, in the future, there will be more opportunities, I think, to shape the CIP because uh our staff considers many different factors in trying to come up with the list. Um, as you can see, there's a lot going on in the city. Uh, a lot of priorities, a lot of desires. Um, so, and we acknowledge a lot of the ones mentioned here today. I think they're very important. Um, and we know the sooner the better. Um, but I think, yeah, I'd like to communicate these. Uh, and I think we'd be happy to facilitate that. But also through My Milpitas, I think the more that our city staff sees this, uh, it'll help us prioritize because another factor for how we prioritize is definitely the community input and from our commissioners. So I, I guess to just remind everyone and encourage everyone um that we do have additional opportunities in the future. But maybe um CIP manager Silvera can comment on any opportunities to provide feedback until it goes to council.
Um, yeah, let me piggyback on that, Jay. So our, our process starts quite early. And typically in October, November, uh, as we kind of gather all the information from departments and, and community output um that we hear throughout the entire year, we, we really gather that information to develop the CIP. Uh, and then we, we have a, a public forum or at the study session, public, public meetings uh at the CIP, for CIP uh study sessions or, or specific meetings. Um, these, these issues that you bring up could be uh uh brought up at that time also. So the, there, there is a, a lot of information that we take out through the entire year. And, and, and the, the CIP also considers, you know, the traffic safety, uh, as we're currently doing an assessment and modeling traffic so that we can prioritize certain improvements in the near future. So we do hear uh, do hear everyone's voice as best as we can, but we also have to put uh, a, a special assessments into it to determine um where the priorities improvement should happen based on available funding.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Seirdell?
Yes, uh, under page three twenty-one, water. And I see it's the second one. We must have missed the last one there. But why is a city paying for Santa Clara Valley Water District, Water Reservoir and Pump Station? Why doesn't the Water District pay for that? Why are we?
Can you, uh, what page did you say again?
Uh, page three, it's under water. First one.
I think he's looking at the staff report.
Page three?
Yeah, it's a staff report. Yeah. So it's uh two thousand.
Santa Clara Valley Water Reservoir. And so that project is for the city to install a reservoir where our water supplier will be Santa Clara Valley Water District. Uh, so the, the city needs to build a reservoir and a pump station because of, because of the growth for uh metro plant and midtown. The water provider will be Valley Water uh, will be coming from Valley Water, Santa Clara Valley Water. So it's, it's not the, for the purpose of Valley Water, it's for the purpose of the city. But the supplier uh of the water is Valley Water. Therefore, we are um building that for uh, for our growth of the city in the metro and uh Milpitas Gateway uh specific plan areas.
Hey, cause it seemed to me that it was a Santa Clara Valley Water District Water Reservoir and Pump Station. I'm going, why are we building it when it should be them?
Yeah, the, the title could be misleading. I understand that. Um, but the description pretty much tells exactly what the, the project is for in the CIP.
I understand the project, but.
Mr. Silvera, uh, Principal Planner Lee has a comment.
Also, uh, as you can see, a lot of these improvements are necessitated by development and growth that's happening in the city. Um, and to assure uh the commission, a lot of those costs, we do um, we do pass it off to the developers through the developer review process. Uh, so we collect development review, um, impact fees of all different kinds so that it can go back and fund um projects like these. Uh, so it's, it wouldn't, I, I wouldn't say it's like all coming from the city and taxpayer money, but you know, we have our developers contribute their fair share um for the growth that's happening here.
You know, I was just going to make a comment if you don't mind.
Uh, go ahead, Vice Chair.
Years past, we've done this before. And in this project, there is no dollar amounts. And I'm just wondering, like that water project, what would that cost the city?
This water project that we, we spoke recently about?
Yes.
Yeah, so this project is roughly going to cost the city roughly twenty-five million dollars as identified as a BMP in the metro specific plan.
Okay, and then, you know, my other comment is in the past, we've always had dollar amounts. Whether that makes any difference or not, but it sure would be nice to have that next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Albona, did you uh, uh, question or comment? I thought you, just before Vice Chair. Yeah.
Yes, Chair. Um, yeah, so looking overall, it seems that the staff had made the comparison and made sure that the capital improvement program is in conformity with the general plan. And uh, I've, I've seen here in review that the, they had, is it true that you had also um accommodated the increase, you know, the, the difference of inflation and everything? Because I think you have improved it by community improvements by nine percent, park improvements by nine percent or so Chair, I would like to propose and for the adoption.
Okay, uh, go ahead. I've got a motion from uh, uh, go ahead, uh, Commissioner Albona.
Can I, oh, here. I would like to propose the adoption of resolution number twenty-three dash zero zero seven. I need to propose twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight capital improvement program is in conformance with the city of Milpitas' general plan.
Okay, got a motion from uh Commissioner Albona. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, got a second from Commissioner Mosin, uh, roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Mosin?
Aye.
Commissioner Medina Ashby?
Aye.
Commissioner Oasty?
Aye.
Commissioner Gualle?
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Albana?
Aye.
Vice Chair Seirdella?
Aye.
Uh, Chair Chuan is aye. The motion passes. And uh, uh, the uh resolution is adopted. Uh, thank you, Mr. Silvera, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a great night.
You too. All right, next item, uh, item number two, escape camper van. Uh, Principal Planner Lee.
Acting Senior Planner Avery Stark is here to give the presentation on um the request for a conditional use permit and site development minor.
on um the request for a conditional use permit and site development, minor site development permit uh for this land use.
Welcome, Mr. Stark. Good to see you here in person.
Thank you, Chair. I thank you, Principal Planner, Mr. Lee. Uh good evening, and Vice Chair Commissioners, members of the public, anyone here in chambers and online. As stated, the item before you is a request for a conditional use permit and a minor site development permit to allow the storage and rental of passenger vehicle, passenger camper vans and onsite improvements to a roughly two-point-three acre lot in the M-two zoning district located eight ninety-three Ames Avenue. Next. Uh in November of twenty twenty-two, the applicant Escape Camper Vans Inc. submitted the application to allow that storage, rental of passenger vans, associated repair activities um inside an existing building. The application is submitted pursuant to Municipal Code uh Section eleven ten fifty-seven point three, which requires that the Planning Commission approve of a rental uh for new vehicles that could include auto, R V and trucks. Um and the zoning code principally permits the related auto and repair services in the M-two zoning district. Next. Here we have just a little aerial image of the project. Um it's located in the southwest portion of Milpitas, uh west of Interstate I six eighty and south of Yosemite Drive. Um it is roughly bordered against the Berryessa Creek there. And the project site is generally surrounded by uh other industrial heavy to light industrial uses. Um and then further east of six eighty, we have our single-family residential area off to the right-hand side of your screen. Next. And again, just here for our zoning map of the property designation um is heavy industrial M-two. And this classification is reserved for buildings and facilities which include ancillary offices for research parks, general manufacturing, um warehousing and distribution, and other uses that are compatible within that district, given the proximity to other uses. An existing industrial building is vacant um currently, and it was once occupied by uh Igneum Group, um which um occupied the building from two thousand and twelve to the end roughly of two thousand and twenty-two. It was a transportation slash transfer station for hazardous waste through the state. Uh no toxic waste was kept at the site. It was more of a transfer hub for vehicles to go to and from sites. Next. All right, so Escape Camper Vans headquartered in Denver, Colorado is proposing to operate this camper van rental office and maintenance facility here at eight ninety-three Ames Avenue. Um Escape Camper Van is North America's largest camper van company with about six hundred vans across thirteen locations. The company would be moving its entire operations um for this from its current location in Hayward, California, to the above-mentioned location here in Milpitas. Will have up to about forty-five vans on the site uh for rental and a variety of configurations. Um and all those configurations can be found on their website. And then um where you can see figure five, and we'll show it here in a minute, of the staff report for an example of what that would look like. In addition, this relocation of Escape Camper Van Company will add um an estimated eight jobs to the Milpitas uh city kind of market pool. And since motor vehicles um would be licensed to a leasing on a temporary basis, uh the use tax instead of sales tax applies, which will generate revenue for the City of Milpitas. Next. Here's just a little van internal configuration. Again, most of the conversation tonight is about operations, but I wanted to make sure people understood. You know, you think of your traditional R V or larger van, this is again a nice condensed version of that, all with anticipation that you can kind of get on it and go. So as you see, it contains pull-out stoves, refrigerators, sinks, sleeping compartments that can convert into kind of living quarters that can take you, you know, anywhere you want to be, a little bit more flexible than a larger uh traditional R V, for example. Next, thank you. Um here we see a site plan. Just please note that there are no exterior changes proposed to this existing industrial building. Um the tenants of the adjacent property at eight ninety-seven Ames, which is there to the rear, um will still maintain access through a gate at the west side of the property. Uh future internal building modifications are going to be permitted through our building department and are uh consistent with condition number twenty-one of the attached resolution. And those improvements are really focused on installation of a new hydraulic vehicle lift for them to be able to perform and do maintenance to these vehicles. Um a new fire prevention sprinkler system throughout the entire building, as it's currently not fire sprinkler. And then a new gas detecting system, um all to the building and fire safety code requirements as outlined in the resolution conditions of approval that talk about the very specific portions of the code that need to apply when converting and adding these types of uses into a a building that didn't have both fire suppression systems. Um there will be minor changes to the existing plumbing within the facility to accommodate washer and dryer machines um and two dishwashers so that they can wash them of the materials, clothing, or the the bedding, sorry, of the vans, and then any of the dishes and plat- plateware that's no part of each van. Um no new landscaping is required um or proposed, and no existing trees uh on the site will be removed. And the applicant will further have to submit to the planning department and to the building department for any new signage that they propose. So right now, there's just the address sign on the building, so subsequently, they come back to the planning counter at City Hall uh for a signed. Next. The operation hours for the uh Milpitas facility would be Monday through Sunday, eight A M to four thirty P M. Um condition of approval number twenty-three requires that the facility's customers not be permitted to park their vehicles overnight on the site. Um the customers would arrive generally via a ride-share app from the airport, or they're being, you know, brought by a friend or family member, taxis um and and dropped off at the property to to begin their rental, but they are not going to be allowed to store their vehicles onsite during the duration of their their trip. Um and when not being rented, the camper vans would be parked in the rear of the property behind the uh security fence um as outlining condition number twenty-four, and the Milpitas Police Department has confirmed that there is sufficient lighting, security cameras and access to that footage in the event, hopefully unlikely that uh there was to be a burglary or someone was to try to gain access to that site. Next, thank you. Um just a little bit of a floor plan here so you can kind of understand what's going on inside the building. So customers will meet with onsite customer service teams at the office to discuss the rental process and complete the required paperwork and insurance documentation. In addition to renting camper vans uh to customers, the employees would also uh wash and service the vehicles onsite. So you can see at the bottom of your screen, we have a vehicle repair area. We have a bit of a storage area for supplies, equipment, things of that nature, and then a staging area where the vehicles might be as they're getting them prepared uh for a rental. Uh Escape will use a porta pad system um by Hydra Tech Environmental Solutions, um which you can see in figure four of your packet um to collect runoff wastewater from the van washing process. The wastewater is then collected, placed in barrels, cleaned and prepared in order to be emptied back into our sewer system, um which is near the vehicle repair area. That again is a requirement the building department will ensure is in full working order to ensure that they're not disposing of any kind of chemicals in appropriately into our sewer system. See, else to be, um and again, is permitted by right and then to uh the escape mechanics or perform light maintenance on the vehicles. This could include oil change, tire replacement rotations, brakes, uh and filters of that nation of that nature. And they will have a contract in place to remove um the improper disposal of any fluids such as oil or window, you know, washer fluid, things like that nature that need to be properly removed from the site. Um in addition, we have our storage area that that's there that will both store kind of folding chairs, camping tables, um any kind of other accessories that go along with the camper van as someone takes it out for their adventure. Slide. Thank you. Um a notice was published in the Peters Post uh placed here at City Hall and the city's website online and public forum. Uh two hundred and thirteen postcards were sent to property owners within a one-thousand-foot distance of the property. To date, we've received no comments um either in written form, email or phone. Next. The project is categorically exempt from further environmental review under SEQA for section fifteen three oh one. It is an existing facility. And as a separate and independent basis, um section fifteen one eighty-three, the project is consistent with the community plan, general plan and zoning. Again, because there's no modifications to the exterior portion of the building, everything will happen as a part of a building permit tenant improvement that they're in the process of preparing to submit to the city for review. And then for the findings, again, uh staff has confirmed that the project meets the findings associated with the conditional use permit set out in the municipal code. I just wanted to point out that again, this proposed use for vehicle sales and rental, not sales rental, is very uh compatible with the existing uses that you find within that surrounding area. And we'll provide a new operation hub for Escape Camper Van in in the South Bay. Um it also is not going to have any significant impacts on the other uses or require any kind of special safety monitoring equipment being installed to any other adjacent uses to combat any kind of onsite chemicals or any kind of concerns of that nature from the fire department. And again, there's no proposed exterior um improvements that would be detrimental to the nearby properties. Next. And then as far as the minor exterior alterations, which are just minimally focused on the restriping of the surface of the parking lot um to provide uh a surplus of additional parking spaces, um they will be restriping a small portion along the backside of the building to create technical parking spaces for the camper vans to be located within. Um and it'll be similarly striped to neighboring businesses, neighboring industrial park areas. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission open and close the public hearing and adopt resolution twenty-three dash zero zero eight, approving conditional use permit number U P twenty-two dash zero zero six and minor site development permit number M S twenty-three dash zero zero three eight, subject to the findings and attached conditions of approval. I am here to answer any questions you may have. Um this concludes my summary and um discussion of the project. I would also let you know that we do have the applicant uh in the Zoom queue to provide a brief five-ish or so minute presentation just to kind of highlight their operations and a little bit more about the company um that we can hear whenever you'd like, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Uh yeah, let's go ahead and have the applicant. They have a presentation to make. Let's have them make the presentation.
Perfect.
Hey, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Ms. Kay.
Great.
Yep.
Thanks, you guys, for having us. Um appreciate it, and Avery, great overview there, very thorough. Um I'm the president here at Escape Camper Vans, and we are excited about our move to Milpitas. Um and I'll just give you a quick overview uh of the the company, a little background. Um and we can go from there. You can go to the next page. Great, so we are North America's largest camper van rental company. Um we rent custom-built, hand-painted camper vans across eleven rental locations. Uh we build them all in-house. And um as Avery mentioned, these aren't your traditional motorhome or R V. They're a smaller type of vehicle like you can see in um the the photos, more of a passenger vehicle that we convert on the inside with some um extra comforts for camping and road tripping, a bed that folds up into a seating area, kitchen, um and I'll show you guys some some photos of that as well. Um and yeah, we're we're here to get people outside, uh inspire people to escape their everyday routines, embrace their adventurous spirit and explore by camper van. Um and so that's that's really from a high level what we're all about. Can go to the next page. Great. So um as mentioned, we have eleven rental locations. Our headquarters are in Denver. That's where I'm located. Um and as you can see, you can pick up and drop off from each of these locations. Uh and we have uh had our San Francisco presence uh back since two thousand and ten, I believe. Um and so right now, we're in Hayward, and we're looking to obviously move to Milpitas. Um but we've been in the Bay Area for a while now. Um we also have a build facility in L A. That's where we build our vehicles. Um we've got six hundred camper vans and about seventy employees spread across the locations. Next page. So originally, um back in two thousand and nine, our company was founded by a man named Rob Mutin. He uh is originally from New Zealand, and he got things started down in L A. And um kind of really brought the concept to the U S at the time. You know, there really wasn't much of an option to rent a camper van. It was more um renting R Vs, Cruise America, um those kinds of companies. So really started out as a budget travel company, a way to, you know, affordable way to get adventurous and explore the U S, get into the national parks, uh things like that. So um started in two thousand and nine, and then um Escape was actually acquired by a private uh company called E N A Companies. Um we have a representative tonight from the parent company as well who's been supporting us in the effort um with the C U P. And so they acquired the Escape U S, and um since then, obviously, there's been a ton of growth since two thousand and nine. Um at that time, there were five locations, three hundred vans, uh two different models, yeah, and around thirty employees. So um here we are today. As you guys can see, we've had a ton of growth. Um six hundred plus vans now, and we continue to, you know, offer budget-friendly camper van rentals, unique travel experiences to uh customers and travelers from all over the world. So um we uh we plan on continuing that pattern here for the next ten years and more. So on to the next page. Great, so uh as you can see, I I haven't mentioned yet, they're all very colorful. We hand paint our camper vans and um we've actually switched to wrapping, but uh we design all of the exterior designs, um which is super fun, and we partner with local artists in L A who who do that. Um we've got five models currently, so the Mavericks there in the middle was our original kind of signature model. We've got the Santa Cruz, which is a smaller one or two-person camper van option. The Big Sur uh seats and sleeps up to five. You can add a little rooftop tent on there. Um our Jeep Camper, we have uh about fifteen of those that run across the the three bigger locations, L A S F and Vegas. And our newest one, the Pop Top, the Del Mar there on the bottom, um is kind of our latest and greatest with a pop top, so two beds on the interior and um auxiliary and extra lighting. So that's kind of the overview of our models there. Great, yeah, I just wanted to provide some visuals to you guys to help kind of outline and and showcase what the interiors look like and what kind of comforts are offered with the the bedding and the built-in kitchen and uh rooftop bed there. So definitely just more about getting outside than uh your traditional R V where there is you know, a lot more interior amenities like a shower and toilet. We don't have any of those. Uh so it's it's really about the kitchen and bed and having that space to, you know, give you, give you a couple more comforts out there in the woods. Uh great, and then I did want to just outline a little bit about our customer base. So I'll give you guys a little bit of sense of the company overall. Um we rent about, do about eleven thousand trips per year across all of our eleven locations. San Francisco is again one of our most popular, um as well as L A and Vegas. We uh it fluctuates each year as far as the breakdown of U S versus international, but we get a lot of international folks coming out to rent. About thirty-five percent are international, at least for um bookings on the books this year, sixty-five percent U S. Um and the breakdown is a little more fifty-fifty out in our Bay Area, so fifty percent international and fifty percent U S, which is great. Obviously, we get a lot of domestic travelers coming out uh to the Bay Area to obviously visit the iconic um, you know, cities surrounding the area as well as the all the wonderful national parks and and attractions nearby. So a lot of them will stick around the area, or they'll do a big loop, or they'll end up doing a one-way all the way across the U S and dropping off in New York. Uh it's really lots of options available for uh different types of itineraries. So um so, yeah, we do. So um, so yeah, we do about fifty percent international U.S. There about eighteen hundred trips per year. Start out of the San Francisco hub. So what we see a lot is renters coming to pick up and they'll fly in to one of the nearby um airport centers and usually spend a night either on the front end or the back end uh at a hotel nearby, the pickup center, um and then take out, take their trip. Um, we have about eleven days as our average trip length uh right now this year. Um, you know, and so there's definitely some some great opportunities to support the local uh local area. We usually provide our customers with a lot of recommendations on where to go and local businesses and good restaurants and where to stuff, stock up on their gear. Um, so it's a, it's a great really launch point for um, you know, a very memorable trip. Um, so yeah, obviously, our peak season is May through September. Um, that's the most popular time to get out camping. Uh, and then our international customer base is um the the top countries are Germany, France, U.K., Netherlands, so and then Australia. Um, so a a very diverse crowd coming and um and taking out uh our vans on trip. So that is all I had for tonight and we're happy to uh support Avery in answering the questions.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Key. Uh, any commissioners have any questions for uh Mrs. Stark or um Ms. Key? Uh, go ahead. Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Is your company a franchise?
No.
No.
Any other questions? Um, any commissioners? Vice Chair, Sierra.
Yeah, I've got one for Avery. Is there a vent system? So when you start a vehicle up, the exhaust goes. Okay.
The the building does have uh five ceiling vents and any kind of modifications or upgrades to those vents will be assessed during the building permit. So don't worry, there'll be no toxic gases inside that building when work is being done.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Albana.
Yes, it's for Avery. Um, thank you, Avery, for that great presentation. So the exterior of the building, they're not gonna touch anything. It'll be, it'll look the same.
It'll look the same as it does today. If you drive by it, you'll you'll notice the vans and that'll that'll really be about it. There they'll be parked outside. So you notice the bright colors, but other than that, no new paint, no new lighting um at this point in time. If they were to choose to come back in the future and needed to expand or do a new fence or new paint, that they would go through the traditional minor site development permit process at City Hall at the counter with a planner.
And also the landscaping will still maintain the same landscape.
They'll still maintain all the existing landscaping that's onsite. Yes.
And maybe plant more trees.
If they'd like to plant more trees, they're they're more than welcome to it. There's a bit of it because it is our industrial zone. There's not a lot of of natural greener. You're right. Um, so it's primarily hardscape. Um, but there is still an existing buffer of landscaping um along uh drive there in front of the building and then along the sides of the building as it abuts the Animal Humane Society to the east and then you get to the various creek portion to the west. So there's some natural vegetation, yes.
So something like this, it could, it could also be approved for an M one light manufacturing?
It could also be, so it's M two, so it's heavier industrial. So it could also be approved for that use. Um, if someone was to come in and choose to to, you know, lease the building and and occupy it as such.
So it will also be approved for an M one and an M two?
True. In the future, uh after their tenancy, yes, it could, it could become an M two building with a heavier industrial manufacturing type of business, correct?
So this one, it'll be just for rental, storage, and how about repairs?
And the repairs too, correct?
Sounds good. I think. And what are the camps? How far are the camps that we people can bring there?
So as an avid camper myself, you can take a four-hour plus drive to Tahoe right now. If you want to go be a little snowy and cold, you could find yourself to your somebody in about a four-hour drive as well. Uh, but you know, you can take your way down to Big Sur, which is like two to three hours. You could spend time down in the Central Coast. Um, there's also like lots of other national parks in Northern California that you, you know, went a four to eight-hour drive and that's kind of the convenience of the fact they're smaller and more compact. I wouldn't go camping. Maybe you could camp in Mel Peters. We've got parks. I don't know if that's an option, but you know, I don't know that parks will let you rent it, but um, yeah, that's the purpose of it.
Yeah, I see. Is this something that the other in other areas, they call it glampcom?
So glamping is a little bit different. Glamping would be if you go rent like a cabin in the woods. But you still have all of the necessities, like a shower, the running water. So that's glamping. So it's out in the wilderness. It's just all the comforts of your home. This is a little more adventurous than glamping. You still have some of your accommodations, like having water and having a place to eat and stick. But you're out in nature in a vehicle or you might still set up a tent if you have people visiting with you or you're, you know, you're further off the grid than at a a rental.
We get a lot of first-time campers, so you're welcome to try it out this summer.
Thank you, Ms. Kate. Yeah, I, that's why I wanted to have public also hear that, because, you know, so they would know exactly what the difference is to. Thank you, Avery, for that presentation. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Galon.
Yeah, here. Thank you, Avery. Um, you mentioned about the uh the guest parking. So they're not allowed to leave the car?
No, they will not be allowed to leave their cars overnight.
How about on the street can they park?
Um, it would likely get towed after seventy-two hours. So the goal is not to create an opportunity for potential vandalism by not having people's personal vehicles being stored onsite. Again, you run the risk, just like parking i- in an industrial portion of our city any day of the week and leaving your vehicle overnight. Um, but ideally, and the, you know, I know Escape uh through their website and information highly encourages you. You're driving or flying to be dropped off at the site, that there's not going to be a place for your vehicle to be stored or washed. It's not going to be secure um on their site.
Think it was a better um suggestion, they can put a sign on this side of no parking.
Yes, through the, through the police department, they've been conditioned to provide onsite signage for for no overnight parking.
Um, how about the um, you said repair, what type of repair are allowed?
So as mentioned in the staff report and in the presentation, it repairs light mechanical repair. It could be oil changes. It could be tire rotations, new tires. Um, the, they have their own mechanics and they'll be able to service their vehicles themselves within the building. Um, which is why they're also installing a hydraulic lift.
So um the mechanic is part of the, one of the employee, part of the employer, right? The mechanic.
Correct. Yes. So Escape will have their own uh mechanics available. And and the auto repair use is actually is the permitted by right use of principally permitted use. So that's why it's not um a part of tonight's uh item. It's mentioned that it's going to be a part of their business operations, but it is a principally permitted use. So if someone wanted to come in today and and open an auto body shop in this building, uh staff would be approving it at the staff level over the counter. Uh, they still need building permits to make sure that it's safe and has all of the necessary components to facilitate the, you know, repairs. Um, but it would be done administratively.
Um, staging and storage, what do you mean by storage and staging? The building, storage being the, the van?
Yeah, so there's the storage of the vans outside the confines of the building and designated parking spots around the entire building. And then inside the building, there's storage for their own equipment. So it could be tables, chairs, camping equipment. Um, bedding, linens, things of that nature that they would then together and prepare to go in a van for someone to take out to rent. But everything operationally will be confined with inside the building footprint. But the storage of the vehicle itself would be behind the secured fence until it's rented.
Um. Uh, I'd like to have a question to the applicant. Um, if there is a fire extinguisher inside the van, you know?
Yes, uh, all the vans come equipped with a fire extinguisher as most of the camper vans, if not all of them, have a small uh portable stove um as a part of the configuration.
I like, I like this color.
The colors?
Yeah, they're fine. Last year, I probably someday and and as, do you have a like a a store or a, you know, near the airport? It would better if like you fly to L.A., at the airport and take the van.
So yeah, as as we talked about in this Kate, in her presentation, they do have locations in other portions of the country. So there you could fly from New York to L.A., you could rent a van and drive up and down the coast and end up in Portland and return a vehicle there. Or vice versa, you could drive from New York all the way across the country and leave the van here. After you're done with your cross-country trip, take a car to the airport and then fly yourself home. So the pick-up and drop-off is, I guess, comparable to U-Haul where you could pick, literally pick it up and drop it off in different locations around the country.
So what's, what's up to end for how many weeks that we can rent in a maximum or minimum?
I, you know, that's a great question, Kate.
Yeah, that there's, the only minimum is three nights, but we've had rentals as long as three hundred and ten days. So there's no limit. You can rent as long as you want.
Yeah. You might see me in one very soon. You never know.
I have a question. Um, what is the?
Hold on, Commissioner Medina Ashby. Um, Commissioner Galon, are you, are you done with your questions?
Uh, I think I'm, no, 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 no. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Go ahead, Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Yes, I'm sorry about that. Um, what is the average cost um to rent? I know there's different sizes, but I mean, um.
Yeah, there, it depends on the season. So obviously, there's high season and low season. It depends on the model um as well as the location. But in general, it can range from seventy-five a night all the way up to two hundred and fifty a night. Um, and again, there's lots of add-ons and customizations you can select to cater it to what you're looking for. And then we also have off-season rates, which can get as low as thirty-three dollars a day. So really kind of runs the gamut.
Do you guys also do um custom conversions if somebody brought their van in? Do you customize it like or convert to a camper?
At this time, no, we don't do personal conversions. Not this time.
Thank you.
Our bread and butter is really designing and building, but only renting them.
Right. Thank you. Commissioner Albona.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask Avery, um. So in the building, there is no, not necessarily that they have safety um monitoring equipment. It's not necessarily, but will we require?
So through the building permit process, they'll do their fire suppression system and a new sprinkler system throughout the entire building. A new lateral from the building to the main is in the middle of the street. There will be a like a smoke carbon monoxide uh detective system placed in the building to ensure that in the event if, you know, a gap, a van is off-gassing some kind of deem that there would be a detective system there to alert the individuals operating and inside that building. Again, there's also going to be the appropriate number of vents uh in the roof to ventilate the building. And again, that will all be detailed um through their contractor during the building permit phase. Um, and as conditioned as a part of both fire, building, land development and engineering's review of this project.
Seems uh this is not going to be detrimental to all the other existing buildings too in the area. So super great. Thank you. Thank you.
Right. Any other questions from the commissioners? If there's any other questions from uh any commissioners, uh, I'm going to open up the public forum. Uh, Ms. Medina, do we have anyone um wanting to make a public comment?
Chair, we do not.
All right. Thank you. All right. Um. Uh, can I get a motion to close the public forum?
Thank you, motion to close the public.
Okay, got a motion from Commissioner Galon. Do I have a second?
A second?
And got a second from Commissioner Medina Ashby. Roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Owasty.
Aye.
Commissioner Galon.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sierra.
Aye.
Chair Chuan is aye. Public forum is closed. Right. Any other questions for um uh staff or the applicant? Or any comments? Any motions? And Mr. Commissioner Galon.
Yeah, I, there's no question. I can make a motion.
Okay, can we put the uh um the uh recommendations up, please?
Um, I'd like to make a motion to adopt um resolution number two-three dash zero zero eight approving conditional use permit number U P two-two dash zero 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 six and minor site development permit number M S two-three dash zero zero three eight. Subject to the attached conditions of approval.
All right, got a motion from Commissioner Galon. Do I have a second?
I second.
Second.
Okay, who was the first? Uh, Commissioner Albana. All right, uh, roll call vote. Um, Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Owasty.
Aye.
Commissioner Galon.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Uh, Vice Chair Sierra.
Aye.
Chair Chuan is aye. Motion passes. Uh, resolution is adopted. Thank you, uh, Mr. Stark and thank you, Ms. Key. Right.
Thank you.
Right. Uh, one thing just wanted to note, um, uh, Ms. Medina, so um uh Commissioner Mostyn left. She did let me know that she was leaving at eight-thirty. So her vote would be, I mean, hers would be absent there.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, new business uh zoning's zoning ordinance update advisory committee. And I think we have, um, I'll divert over to you, um, uh, Principal Planner Lee.
Thank you, Chair Chuan. Uh, I'll give a a little bit of a summary of the project and then explain uh what we are hoping for. Uh, so the project is the comprehensive zoning ordinance update. Uh, we've mentioned this a few times in past meetings. But uh, we are, we initiated the project uh to update our ord- uh zoning ordinance comprehensively. Oh, it it's a pretty big update. I think it was long overdue. Um, but you know, as we hear in every presentation, you know, we always check for consistency with the zoning ordinance. But the way it is right now, uh, it it is a little bit challenging for staff and even the public to understand uh where things are, understand the standards. Um, it's outdated and, for example, some land uses that are more recent are um not captured in the zoning ordinance. So we're hoping that this project to update the whole ordinance will, you know, just save staff time and uh really just make it easier for the public to, you know, get improvements done for their homes and for new businesses to come into the city. Um, so it's it's a good, important project. Uh, but you know, with any kind of project of this magnitude, we are uh engaging in a robust community outreach process and part of that outreach process is to form a zoning advisory committee. Um, because the subject is so technical, uh, you know, matters of zoning, uh, you know, we have decided to go the route of pulling from existing commissions to create um another, an ad hoc committee that will uh meet together over the two and a half years or so that it will, it will take to commit, complete the project. Um, you know, to get advice and guidance from our commissioners who, you know, really know the city well and have great expertise in a variety of subjects. Uh, so we, we've asked, um, we're asking several commissions and we're hoping for uh two commissioners here to join the uh the Z A C. And to really, to briefly go over the the roles and responsibilities. You know, in in the beginning of the project, it, you know, we, there will be opportunities to kind of guide the overall vision and the goals of the project. Um, but later on, we will, when we have drafts and deliverables, uh, you know, we'd love to have feedback from the Z A C just to make sure that, you know, we are considering the community's needs and concerns. Uh, and more details, uh, it'll probably start somewhere um uh la- later this year, uh perhaps in the summer and then it'll go, you know, un- until the, near the end of two thousand twenty-four. There will be five meetings and the meetings will be approximately two hours each. Uh, so we will provide the materials ahead of time. So you have adequate time to review and then during these meetings, we can have great discussion. Uh, yeah, so if, yeah, I'm here to answer any questions, but I guess the the recommendation really is to, you know, to you know, to review the responsibilities, consider nominations, and select two planning commissioner to serve on the Z A C. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Principal Planner Lee. I also see that we have, uh, Holly, uh, Pearson, who's, uh, on that. Uh, you have any, um, uh, uh, thing else you want to add to, uh, what Principal Planner Lee had just commented and provide the, uh, brief overview.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I think Mr. Lee summed up everything pretty clearly. Um, I would just add, um, we're also going to, ju- just to name the, the other commissions, um, economic development and trade arts, parks, recreation and cultural resources, and energy and environmental sustainability. Um, also, we're tentatively hoping to have the first meeting in May, uh, if, uh, the schedule proceeds as planned. Um, in addition, I, at least one of the other commissions has also selected an alternate in case one of the two uh, selected members is unable to join. So that's optional, uh, but it's, uh, i- if, uh, the commission is interested and so desires, that can be done as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, do any of the commissioners have any questions on the, you know, to Principal Planner Lee or, um, Holly Pearson? Okay, Vice Chair Sierdella.
Since this commission's gonna last two and a half years, correct? As we all know, we serve at the pleasure of the city council. And if we're not re-elected the next three years, then what happens then with the folks that you know, have gotten some of that knowledge and the folks that'll be going in to, uh, take our places?
That, that is a good point. Um, the, I, I would also point out the, the project duration is about two and a half years. The, the role of the zoning advisory committee, uh, would be the first meeting, yeah, as I said, in May of this year. And then the last meeting in November of twenty-twenty-four. So that's actually a span of a year and a half. That may make it, um, to fit better within the terms of, uh, the current planning commissioners, uh, and various commissioners. Um, but I, I would say that your point is, that's a, a, a good argument, I would say, to have an alternate in case someone's term uh, on the planning commission ends before the, the zoning advisory committee's work is done. But mo- most of the work would be completed within the time uh, that you're, uh, serving on the commission.
Yeah, I think I'm all in fair, you know, in favor of having an alternate that's got two and a half years left anyway. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I have a question. Um, you know, so just, you know, looking at the planning commission website. Um, you know, one of the things, and this might actually be for our C D attorney there. So one of the items on the act- you know, the website, it says that, um, if you go on the website, it, it, you know, it states that, uh, you know, the planning commission, I mean, I guess my question first is, is the zoning advisory committee considered a public office?
Uh, the zoning advisory committee would be an ad hoc committee that would, uh, comprised of members of various commissions. It would roughly be equivalent of a subcommittee, and it would not be inimible to your service on this commission.
Right, thank you. That's why I needed to hear that. Okay, any other questions for any of the, uh, commissioners?
Pardon me, if, if I may just add to that, the, uh, the, the meetings would however be, uh, publicly noticed and they would be open to the public. So conducted, um, via Zoom or via online platform and members of the public would be welcome to join.
Okay, no, thank you, thank you for that. You know, I think my comment for the, uh, C D attorney was, uh, uh, you know, there's a comment in the, uh, uh, planning commission website where it states that, uh, you know, members, you know, on the planning commission cannot hold any other public office or position in the seat while serving as members of the commission. However, the C D attorney, you know, clarified that this would essentially be a subcommittee and it does comprise of members of other commissions there. And it's an ad hoc committee there, so, um, it does not, uh, violate any, um, you know, state mandates. That's what it sounds like there.
No, this would be within the duties of serving as.
Okay, excellent. Right, any other questions from the commissioners? Uh, Commissioner Albana.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm. So this is just going to be conducted via Zoom, not here at the City of Lopetus? Of, uh, building?
Correct, that is the plan. The, the consultant is working, uh, mostly remotely from, uh, uh, they're, they're based in Northern California. But I would not be attending in person. And so, uh, each member of the, uh, of the committee, uh, would also be able to participate uh, or, or would be participating remotely.
I see. And I also see the participant commitments here, that at least the dates are already projected. Uh, May, August, April, September, and November. And, uh, with expectation to read plus or minus hundred pages, and it'll be given, uh, ahead of time for reviewing. That's, that's good. Enough time to review.
Correct.
All right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Pierce. Good chair.
All right. A C attorney is just, you know, this being new business here, uh, do I, does this need to be a, open up a public forum or anything like that here?
So, um, the public is allowed to comment on anything that is on the agenda. Um, so I would take public comment. You do not have to open a public hearing.
Okay, all right, thank you. Right, any other commissions, uh, question for any commissioners? Right. Right, anyone in the public, uh, look like they maybe have any comments or questions?
None, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, do any commissioner, I guess I'm gonna start sort of the process here. I'm gonna, you know, ask, uh, do any of the commissioners want to volunteer to be part of the zoning advisory committee?
Chair, is this by volunteer or we have to nominate?
Um, I'm, I'm first asking for volunteers, um, and then, uh, you at least get an understanding who would like to do it. And then, um, then we can also, uh, but yes, we can also do nominations as well too.
Can I make a nomination? Uh, Mercedes, I think it do a great job and like to nominate him.
And, uh, I will second a nomination there. But first, I, I, Mercedes Commission.
Nominate and volunteer, huh?
Yeah, I guess the question is you've been nominated, um, I would say, but do you accept the nomination?
Yes, I would.
Okay, and I second the nomination there. So, um, I'm going to go ahead and, and, uh, you know, do a roll call vote here. Um, so, uh, Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Owasty.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Glong.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sierdella.
Aye.
Chair Chuan is aye. So we have our first, uh, member of the zoning advisory committee commission. Congratulations. Commissioner Albana.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, commissioners.
All right, do we have a, uh, a second, uh, nomination? Um, so there's gonna be three positions open, so we filled one, so there's two. Um, the third one will be a alternate, so, um, just wanna be clear on that. Do we have any, uh, other volunteers or any other nominations?
Chair, I'll nominate Deepak.
Okay, uh, so we have, uh, a nomination, um, before taking it, uh, doing a second, um, Deepak, do you accept a nomination?
I accept the nomination. Thank you.
You said what? Yes, okay, then do I have a second for the nomination?
I second.
Okay, got a second from Commissioner Medina Ashby. I'm going to do a, uh, roll call vote. Um, Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Glong.
Yes.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sierdella.
Aye.
Chair Chuan is aye. Okay, great, we, we, um, so congratulations, uh, Commissioner uh, Owasty, you are our second, uh, member of the zoning advisory committee.
Thank you, Alex. Thank you, all the commissioners.
So we have two members.
Chair, I'd like to, um, nominate as the alternate Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Second.
Okay, well, let me ask, uh, Commissioner Medina Ashby, do you accept the nomination as a, uh, alternate?
I respectfully decline.
Okay, so she is respectfully declines, so, um, all right, do we have any other nominations? If not, I would like to make a nomination, uh, like to, uh, nominate, um, uh, Commissioner Glong.
Here I respectfully decline nomination.
Okay, he respectfully declines. Uh, Commissioner Moston's not here, so, um.
Can I nominate Chair?
Um, I'll accept the nomination, sure.
Second.
Okay, we got a second from, uh, so I could do the roll call vote, but I'm, I'm not gonna be doing the final vote, so I'll do a roll call vote. Um, Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Owasty.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Glong.
Aye.
Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sierdella. Okay, um, thank you. Honored to be the nomination. Um, however, I, I do want to advise you all, I'm, as what Vice Chair Sierdella had commented, you know, my term is up at the end of this year. So, um, if I am not selected to be back on the commission, then you will have to find a, an alternate, but I'll definitely attend whatever I can here. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We're very, uh, grateful and pleased to have your, your participation.
All right, thank you so much. All right. Any other? Okay, so that's that's the end of new business, uh, uh, and actually prior to, um, it's okay, we have someone here that, uh, Vice Chair would like to, um, uh, just introduce, is that okay, C D attorney? Okay, uh, Vice Chair Sierdella, you wanted to introduce, uh, a member in the, in the audience here.
Yes, uh, our only person out in the audience here. Ben is a Fremont Planning Commissioner and also the Vice Chair of the California League of Cities. So the folks that are going will probably see Ben. Thank you for coming, Ben.
Right, welcome, welcome, Ben. Thank you. All right, uh, legally, is any person agreed by any final decision of any board, commission, or department head to the city of Lopetus may appeal decision to the city council by filing written notice of the appeal with the city clerk within twelve calendar days of the date of said decision and paying the required fee. This time limit shall be strictly enforced. Next item, adjournment. You know, I get a motion to adjourn the meeting. Okay, got a, uh, a motion from, uh, Commissioner Glong. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from, uh, Commissioner Medina Ashby, roll call vote. Uh, Commissioner Medina Ashby.
Aye.
Commissioner Owasty.
Aye.
Commissioner Glong.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Albana.
Aye.
Vice Chair Sierdella.
Aye.
Chair Chuan is aye. Meeting adjourned.